Recording in progress.
Thank you. Good morning. On the table outside, there is also a copy on our website. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, with which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with which we pray.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 28, 2023, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, April 18, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property or increased value in property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. D, E, F, G. There is no need for executive session. Is there a motion to approve that includes adjournment?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. At this time, there's been a request for a point of privilege by Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Morgan?
I had two quick items. I wanted to mention that it was 55 years ago today. It was a Thursday afternoon, and I remember it so well that Martin Luther King was killed in Memphis, Tennessee. And I just want to mention that and the tremendous loss of an individual who really cared about equality. The other thing I wanted to say, it was a week ago yesterday, that we had the tragedy Senseless Act in Nashville, and I hope we keep all of these young people in our prayers. And those kind of things just really get to me when you see those nine-year-olds or any-year-olds and the 61-year-olds and so on. It's just such a senseless act that I wish there was more we could do. Because when I was in school, that was an unheard of situation, and most of us on this board would agree. I wish there was more something we could do. So I think we need to keep those families and those young people and all people in our prayers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next is Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 28, 2023, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, April 11, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our consent agenda. Items A through G. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we'll move to recognition and proclamations. The first is a resolution recognizing a county employee, Elizabeth Zorko, who worked for the Douglas County Election Commission for 19 years. And I would ask them, whoever you want to come forward, everybody can come forward if they want. We do have a resolution for Elizabeth, and I'll go ahead and read it first and then turn it over to Brian. Whereas Douglas County, Nebraska recognizes that its employees are the county's most important asset and resource for providing quality service to the citizens of Douglas County. And whereas the county wishes to recognize Elizabeth of the Douglas County Election Commission on her retirement and dedication of service of 19 years to Douglas County, Nebraska. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that the county recognizes Elizabeth Zorko for her dedicated service to the citizens of Douglas County and thankfully presents this resolution as testimony thereof dated this fourth date of April, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? There was a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Brian, go ahead.
Good morning. Brian Cruz, Douglas County Election Commissioner. So yes, Liz has actually had a service to the voters of Douglas County longer than that. She started in actually 2000 as an election worker, and then she became a temporary employee and then a permanent staff member. So she's been part of our organization for 19 years. You know, Liz's official title is the Resource Coordinator. Really, what she did is she helped manage all the polling places in Douglas County for nearly the last 20 years. So if you've gone to a polling place in the last 20 years, you can thank Liz for that. She's the one, you know, we have about 215, give or take, each election, so she makes sure they're ADA compliant, parking, gets contract signs, you know, all of these things has worked great with all of our community partners, school districts, churches, car dealerships, you name it. She's been very resourceful in finding places, neighborhood polling places for the voters of Douglas County. And obviously, when the pandemic happened, you know, Liz had a big job in our office because we had to move out of retirement communities. I mean, the pandemic happened like mid-March, and we conduct an election mid-May with polling places. And so we had to move out of OHA and retirement communities, things like that, and she did a remarkable job. We still had about 200 neighborhood polling places in that election. And even though the vast majority of them in May voted by mail, we were open for business at all of those places. Liz also does some of our videography. So we also had to switch from in-person training on poll workers to Liz was in charge of making videos within just a few weeks for poll worker training. And then we put it on our website. We had it on public television. So she was pretty remarkable in getting that transitioned over. And, you know, I would never wish for the pandemic to come back, but not everything that happened in the pandemic is bad. We got great feedback on the online poll worker training, and we're still doing it that way. So I guess if there's a shining moment from the pandemic for us, that would be it. So I'd just like to thank Liz for all of her resourcefulness and for her years of service. And obviously, we wish you well in the next chapter of your life. So thank you, Liz.
My name is Elizabeth Zorko. I'm with the Election Commission. It has been my distinct honor and privilege to serve the Douglas County Election Commission. This was a vocation that chose me. It was complex, inspirational, and ultimately very fulfilling. I want to thank Election Commissioner Brian Cruz. Such kind words from me today. Thank you, Brian. Deputy Election Commissioner Chris Carruthers and election manager Justine Kessler for their diligent and thoughtful leadership through some rather complicated times. I wish them and all of my colleagues at the Election Commission Godspeed and safety as they continue their challenging and significant work. I thank all of you.
Well, on behalf of the board, Elizabeth, you have been a stellar employee, and you did, you worked through amazing times.
Yeah.
And as I always say, county government never shut down. We just found different ways to do what we needed to get done. And you're shining example of that, as they said, so we appreciate all you've done for Douglas County.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So enjoy your retirement.
I will. And you can enjoy my work on YouTube.
Okay. Congratulations. And Elizabeth, Elizabeth, we do have a resolution for you. Let's take a vote real quick. All, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
And then we'll just take a quick photo with you right here in the front and give you the resolution.
Brian, you should get in it.
You want me?
Yeah, yeah, I think you should.
Do you want one with her and then one with me?
No, I think you should get in it. You can stand, Brian, stand next to her, or, yeah, that works. You can go first. Come, this is probably better.
Okay.
Thank you. Getting several. Thank you. Okay, here we go. I'm gonna take a couple also. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will very much. Thank you. I don't think I'm really the house. Oops. That's my place for getting ready.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Next is a resolution recognizing National Public Health Week. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll read the following resolution, but just note, this is Public Health Week, but it's also within National Minority Public Health Month. So once we come back from the break, I'll probably have another resolution just acknowledging that. So it reads, whereas the week of April 3, 2023, is National Public Health Week, and whereas the theme for this year is centering and celebrating cultures in health. And whereas in 2023's goals is to, whereas 2023's goal is to recognize the contributions of public health in improving the health of people of the United States and achieving health equity. And whereas the U.S. and the global community are still responding to the Global 19 Pandemic. And whereas in 2020, the life expectancy at birth of the population of the U.S. declined by 1.5 years, which is the largest drop in life expectancy since 1943. And whereas many of the leading causes of death for individuals resulted from chronic conditions, which are among the most common and costly, however, often the most preventable of all health challenges. And whereas racial and ethnic minority populations in the U.S. continue to experience disparities in the burden of illness and death as compared to the overall population. And whereas violence is a leading cause of premature death, and is estimated that more than seven individuals per hour die of violent death in America. And whereas over 47,500 lives were lost due to suicide in 2019 and in May 2020 during the COVID-19 pandemic, emergency department visits for suspected suicide attempts began to increase among adolescents aged 12 to 17 years, and especially among young girls. And whereas despite significant progress in reducing the overall infant mortality rate in the United States to a historic low of 5.6 infant deaths per 1,000 live births, in 2019, the infant mortality rate still varies greatly between states. And whereas Black mothers experience a maternal mortality rate three to four times higher than white mothers. And whereas from 2018 to 2019, the United States spent nearly $13 per person on climate change adoption in the health sector, far less than what is needed to prevent the growing health impacts of climate change. And whereas studies show that even small strategic investments in disease prevention can result in significant savings in community healthcare costs. For example, each 10% increase in local public health spending has been shown to contribute to a 6.9% decrease in infant deaths, 3.2% decrease in deaths related to cardiovascular disease, 1.4% decrease in deaths due to diabetes, and 1.1 decrease in cancer-related deaths. And whereas public health professionals help communities to prevent, prepare for, and mitigate and recover from the impact of a wide range of health threats, including disease outbreaks such as the COVID-19 pandemic, natural disasters such as wildfires, flooding, and severe storms, and other disasters, including those caused by human activity and public health emergencies. And whereas these professionals collaborate with partners outside the health sector, including city planners, transportation officials, education officials, and private sector businesses, recognizing that other sectors can strongly influence health outcomes. And whereas efforts to adequately support public health and the prevention of disease and injury will continue to transform health systems focused on treating illness rather into systems focused on preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. And whereas, this board supports the goals and ideas of National Public Health Week by recognizing the effort of the Douglas County Public Health Professionals in preventing disease and injury, and by acknowledging the role of public health in the following areas: preventing and responding to infectious disease outbreaks, mitigating short-term and long-term impacts of infectious disease outbreaks on the health and wellness of individuals in the United States, addressing social and other determinants of health, including health disparities, experienced minority populations, and improving the overall health of individuals and communities in Douglas County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County that the Board hereby declares and recognizes the first week of April, 2023, as National Public Health Week, encouraging increased efforts and resources to improve the health of individuals in Douglas County, and asks our residents to learn more about the role of public health systems in improving health. With that, I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is a resolution declaring April as National County Government Month, recognized... Sorry?
Sorry. Dr. Hughes is on, and I didn't see her on until now, and I don't know if I can ask if she's got something to say in her respect.
Oh, sure.
Thank you so much, and I apologize I can't be there in person. I'm at the Nebraska Public Health Conference over the next couple of days. Thank you so much for that wonderful resolution and for recognizing not just those of us who are working at Douglas County Health Department, but also all of the partners and stakeholders who really have a hand in ensuring public health can happen. We certainly can't do it alone. We're very grateful and we're honored to be able to serve the residents of Douglas County and to build a better community. And we will be here to continue pushing public health in our community in a direction where someday every single resident will be able to access the tools that they need to live a healthy and vibrant life. So thank you again, Commissioners, for your recognition of public health this week.
Thank you. So next, we have a resolution declaring April as National County Government Month, recognizing the commitment of the National Association of Counties and the essential role that America's counties play in the well-being of our communities and in our nation. So the resolution reads, whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serve more than 300 million Americans and provide essential services to create healthy, safe, vibrant, and economically resilient communities. And whereas since 1991, the month of April has been recognized as National County Government Month, an annual celebration of county government. And whereas America's counties provide public health, justice, safety, infrastructure, transportation, technology, environmental stewardship, and economic services. Whereas under the leadership of the 2023 National Association of Counties NACO President Denise Winfrey, NACO is demonstrating how counties rise. And whereas counties' rise is this year's theme inspired by President Winfrey and is an acronym for Resiliency, Inclusion, Solvency, and Empowerment, and county priorities to be undertaken with energy and passion for building stronger counties. Whereas Douglas County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, safety, and future of our residents in practical and cost-saving ways. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby declares the month of April, 2023, as National County Government Month, and encourages all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to learn about the important role that counties play in the well-being of our communities and to participate in county government awareness appreciation dated this fourth day of April, 2023. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend, and again, both resolutions that we talked about today, again, just emphasize, want to emphasize the importance of our role in keeping our communities safe and healthy. With that, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, or citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Or anyone on Zoom as well?
Good morning. My name is Nicole Leclair. I live in Bellevue, down the road. I'd like to speak about the meetings held upstairs. You know it's an important meeting when it is held upstairs, room 903. My experience with attending meetings upstairs is that those are becoming more and more the true commissioner meetings. While these meetings in this room are more refined for the general public, all these meetings, however, are public meetings. But somehow, the ones upstairs get lost and are not as well-known. So trying to find information, I don't know if it got in the, it didn't get in the agenda, but, you know, looking online, it's kind of buried in the website of the Daily Record. So I didn't see it on today's agenda. I want to make sure the people watching know about this afternoon's mental health facility discussion meeting at 1:00 p.m. You can attend it in person or via Zoom. Information can be found on the Omaha Daily Records website. At the last mental health facility meeting in room 903 on December 19, it was discussed that you all and/or architect Alpavandra, we're going to have a professional cost estimator examine your plan for a co-located mental health facility that will include those who are incarcerated with mental health issues in the same building with those in the general public with mental health issues. I know, I know, it has been stated that these two populations will never meet in this new visualized building. Can you truly guarantee this and how? Even if it were a perfect space with a guaranteed promise that those who may be convicted with violent crimes will not meet my friend or family member down the hall, there will be immense stigma for the general population to be in the same building next door to the jail. Perhaps this makes sense, considering the recent unfortunate story in the news of the 46-year-old man, out of respect for him and his situation, I do not want to mention his name, last Friday, holding up traffic for almost nine hours as he was experiencing a mental health crisis while standing on a bridge over I-480 last Friday. There are pictures of him holding his arms up to surrender after he climbed down a ladder and then being swarmed and held down on the ground by several of what I can only assume are police officers. Is this how we handle mental health issues? Handle is the right word. The same KETV story also made sure to state that the Omaha Fire Department launched its new truck with a bucket to help get him down. I know, I will hear that those incarcerated also experience stigma and how concerned you are for them in this. I do not want them to have stigma either. I also do not want for the best way for the general public to receive mental health care is by getting arrested and going to jail. Everyone deserves to have proper mental health care treatment, but that may not mean in the same building or space. Ask your friends and family members or anyone you know with mental health issues where they would want to be treated: in a building next to a jail, co-located with prisoners, or in a building separate from that population. I think we all know the answer. Just listening on the way here on the radio, they were talking about doctors and how they're experiencing basically PTSD from the last three years. What do you think that poor man last Friday really needed? To be arrested or to be listened to and heard and adequately cared for and treated? That story also stated that he had previous encounters with law officers. What were those like? Did he receive mental health treatment? What did that consist of? Days in the county jail and then released? Whether incarcerated or for the general public, one thing is sure is that there's nowhere to go for long-term residential mental health care treatment. That needs to change. Not addressing this will cost the county more in the long run. It is costing the county now. Healthcare versus incarceration, which one is more expensive, really? I again encourage you to take your time with this, explore all options, all costs. Don't tie up all of your $55 million in the building. We can see how well that works by looking across the street at the kids' jail that is still empty as you try to navigate where to put the 20 or so kids that there is no room for in your new building. A building is not and never will be a program. It will only be sunk money with nothing left over for truly helping an adult with mental health issues or a child and their family going through a challenging time. Spending and building are easy, maybe fun. Programs are not. Please do the work. Take the time. Our community and its people are worth it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak about an item not on the agenda?
Left your phone. Someone in here has a cat. Sorry. Jaquela Yarborough, Sisbee, Nebraska, 2417 Burdette Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I too have some concerns about the, first off, thank you for your time today. My mom says, tell them thank you for their time. I did it, Mom. I sincerely thank you for your time today and all the citizens who take the time to come out to these meetings and the people who serve. My primary concern today is about the mental health facility, the talks that are going on about the mental health facility and the construction of it. I'm trying to figure out what the Commissioner's role particularly is so that I can aim my comments and concerns in the appropriate place. But I want to just draw our attention to a topic that I discuss every time I come down here, which is racial and ethnic disproportionality. My primary concern is that with the current racial and ethnic disproportionality, that we will stand to see the same thing as we start to populate this facility. We do know that once the county says they want to build something, it's going up, right? So what in, in what way can we, the public, primarily being a research-based institute, help to inform that process with our qualitative means, right? By qualitative means, I mean that there should be public input that is taken into consideration, not just taken into consideration, but actually used to engineer this entire facility, the programming, the services that are offered. I can be of a lot of assistance, being that my mother has three children. I'm the only one that does not have a diagnosed mental health condition. So this is something that's near and dear to my heart. We grew up in northeast Omaha. My mom told me, don't get up here and cry today, but my brother and my sister both have diagnosed schizophrenia. As children, they were diagnosed with lead poisoning. We grew up in the same infested environment. We grew up in the same infested environment that many of our kids are still growing up in, Black and Hispanic, those of us in eastern Omaha, particularly in northeast Omaha. And I'm seeing the same thing happen over and over and over again. I pulled some slides together today, I don't know if I can get this to work, I've never used this before, but hopefully somebody, it'll get somebody's attention, because there clearly is a pipeline of how people are getting sick, people are not being born, thank you, with pronounced mental illness. I grew up with very high-functioning brothers and sisters, and by the time we got to high school, something was noticeably wrong. And it's not just my brothers and sisters, but I counted my friends, and there are three of us left, three, who don't have a pronounced drug addiction and mental health issue, who aren't in prison or in jail with a pronounced mental health issue, who are not struggling right now with some pronounced mental health issue. It's environmental, it's systemic, it is a public health crisis. Why the public is not being consulted on this, why we are not taking a direct approach to make sure that racial and ethnic disparities are addressed as we pursue the development of another building, another system that will cycle my people, our people, through these facilities? I'm not amazed, I'm not impressed by, oh, this is going to be a long-term, I do appreciate the fact that we're putting time and intentionality around a long-term mental health facility, because I myself am taking care of my older two siblings. If you took the freeway today, you passed my brother to get off on the 14th Street exit. He was the guy with the sign with his stomach blown open, because the last time he had a mental health crisis, someone shot him with a 12-gate shotgun last August. These are very real issues, these are very real families. What I want to address really quickly, thank you for the Foster Care Review Office for putting together these visuals, in 2021, in 2022, let me get slide 66 here. These are going to be your kids. I don't know if you guys can see that big enough, but these are going to be your kids. Why am I focusing on the youth in probation? Because we have the most pronounced racial and ethnic disparities in foster care, on juvenile probation, in juvenile detention, in an out-of-home placement, pronounced disparities. Black youth are 5.8% of the population, look at their representation in these systems, and I'll get to my point, as I know I'm running out of time. Have a ton of slides to show you, but perhaps the most important is slide 77. Slide 77 says.
You're, you're out of time, honey, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
But thank you.
Thank you. Please look at slide 77.
Well, dude, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Louise Humana, 77, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I had breakfast over at NyHawks. It's in the, I want to get away from just calling the area North Omaha and talking about neighborhoods, Florence, Florence neighborhood, that's where NyHawk is at, this morning, I had breakfast and we were talking about, they were talking to me how I need to, when I talk to people, to consider that people are going through their own experiences and I have to consider that, things that I might not know, that I need to listen to what they're telling me, and I was like, okay, that, that's, that's important. I think you guys do a better job at doing something like that where you're listening, listen to people and then understand what they're really telling you. And that's something that I'm, I learn from, not everybody here, but a number of the people here know how to listen. So, I've said some things and I want to amend what I've said. I've said that here in Douglas County in the United States, we have a racist system of economic inequality. And this morning, they told me I should say that it's actually, that we're in a racist system of social-economic inequality. And I'm, I'm just researching that word, "social-economic," but I wanted you guys to hear that again, because I think Commissioner Friend wasn't here when I particularly said that here, we, we are in that kind of system. And when I say "system," I'm also talking about generations, like, time after time after time, that's how the system functions. It's, it's not a one-off where you're just racist one time, based on where you come from. And so, when we say "social-economic," I think that is to do with minority groups and also, and, and everybody that lives below a poverty, makes a certain amount of income. When you make, whether you're white or Latino or whatever, you're, you make below a certain amount and conditions affect you, can affect you more pronouncely than if you have money. And so, there was this discussion about money because of what's happening in our national politics today. There's, you can get out of things when you have money, and when you can get out of things, it goes better for you, and most people who can do that are white, are white men. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
My name is Kirsten Erickson. I don't know if I'm allowed to speak if I don't have a fixed address.
That's okay.
I didn't really want to come down here, because it's very emotional for me, but hearing these other brave people talk, and I've been coming to these meetings off and on for the past two years now, and since people brought up the topic of mental illness, I felt compelled to come down here and say something. I, as a person diagnosed with a mental illness over three decades ago, have experienced one of the worst traumatic experiences of my life, which ended up making me homeless. It was a direct result of the treatment I received while I was inpatient. I followed their treatment plans to the letter, I did everything they said, I went everywhere they told me to go, and I wound up homeless as a direct result. Let me give you a glimpse as to what it is exactly like inside a psychiatric ward inpatient. If the problem cannot be solved within five minutes and a pill, forget it. The people there are uninformed about trauma. I had psychiatrists, when I told them I was suicidal and I had PTSD and that's why I came inpatient, berate me and degrade me for half hour after I told them I was suicidally depressed. I found out later that's a technique they use to siphon out people who they believe is taking advantage of the system. I wouldn't have been back in there again had they done a proper job the first time. I tried to explain to a therapist there, the trauma I was experiencing as a result of becoming homeless as a direct result of the mental health care facility establishment in Omaha, specifically CHI, Lasting Hope, but there are other entities involved. She basically told me to, because she doesn't know what she's doing, she was a dangerous quack, she got angry at me and told me, we're not out venting here, we're about solutions, whatever the hell that means. I was not allowed to talk about suicide attempts while in group discussions, as a direct order from her, we're not going to be negative in group today, no talk about suicide. I was diagnosed with major depressive disorder, anxiety, and no one had the brains to diagnose me with PTSD from childhood trauma and adult trauma, from abuse. I spent 30 years working hard every single day combating my depression. I couldn't, got to the point where I couldn't hold a job because my depression was so bad. It's more a result of abuse than a biological depression, but the two work together. Abuse is the number-one cause of mental illness. I was accosted by a patient while I was inpatient, psych, another patient. I told staff, the nurse got angry at me and said, you should have told us sooner, we could have done something about it. Then the tech proceeded to cover for her. I told my psychiatrist about it. He didn't do anything. I told the lovely therapist about it, she didn't do anything. There was no investigation done. This happens repeatedly, over and over again. When something like that happens inpatient, it's ignored, just like it is out a lot of places in the real world.
One minute.
My life is a complete and utter mess. I have complex PTSD, I'm in constant emotional, mental, and physical anguish as a result of my experiences. I just touched the tip of the iceberg here. There were so many different things that happened and so many different instances of trauma while I was actually supposedly receiving help, that I ended up feeling homicidal at the end of it all. It was spiritually abusive, emotionally abusive, and mentally abusive, the treatment I got while I was inpatient, and these different various facilities that they sent me to, group homes where their psychological abusers run in the place, and you're just dumping people wherever you can, there's no standards, because the city, the state.
Time.
They come up with policies where they just immediately cut you off your medications if you can't make one appointment.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearings. The first public hearing is a text amendment to the Douglas County zoning regulations to add automotive rental sales as a special use in the MU Zone District. Kent is here, our Environmental Services Director. This is the public hearing. Kent?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. In 2020, the, the board approved amendments to the zoning regulations as part of the, the update to the county's comprehensive plan. As part of that process, we inadvertently omitted a designation from the MU Zone District, Mixed Use Zone District. Essentially, what happened, we, we took an MU3, MU2, MU1 district and consolidated, consolidated them into one district, zone district. And in the process, we omitted the automotive rental sales as a special use in that MU district. And so, this is an administrative cleanup item that seeks to put that special use permit designation back in for the MU district for automotive rental and sales. And happy to entertain any questions. The Planning Commission did recommend approval on a six to zero vote.
This is the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak on the item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote. Next is a text amendment to the Douglas County zoning regulation relating to landscape businesses. Kent?
Thank you, Commissioners, again. Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. There are a number of, of text amendments that we are proposing for the zoning regulations. These, these apply to Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, and 10 within the zoning regulations, and they're all really intended to provide some, some additional guidelines for landscape businesses. We are seeing, have seen for, for a number of years now, kind of a proliferation of, of these types of businesses, which are, are fairly conducive to acreage-style developments. And we're also seeing then some increasing conflicts with, with residents in those areas. So, looking at a, a more proactive approach of sitting down with, with some of those landscape use property owners and, and others, and the Planning Commission going through a process over a number of months, including the December and, December 2022 and, and Jan, and excuse me, and February 2023, Planning Commission meetings where we solicited input in those public meetings from property owners that have landscape businesses and so on. So, fast forward to the March 15th public hearing before the Planning Commission, Planning Commission did consider all of these particular text amendments, and the one thing I did want to point out was, we had those two public, or excuse me, those two public discussions in December and, and February. None of the folks then, we, we made some tweaks to, to, based on what those folks said. We put that out for them a couple of weeks before the, the March 15th meeting, and we didn't get any, any further input. We felt like, and, and one of the comments from the Planning Commission said, yeah, the fact that no one's here, I think we've, we've reached a good compromise here for these particular regulations and these text amendments. So, with that, I'm more than willing to go through and, and kind of line-item these, but they are all, they are all related to the landscape uses that we are looking to, to kind of compromise on and really to, really to find a way that they can exist and, and kind of exist in harmony with the, the neighborhoods and the residential neighborhoods. So, so that's kind of the overall intent. I'm happy to go into further detail on this, but I think that, that explains kind of what, what the intent is, and happy to entertain then any questions you might have.
This is the public hearing, we do have a couple of lights. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I wanted the board to know, I wanted the Commissioners to know, and I wanted anybody who's interested in the subject matter to know. I was actually at two of the meetings, I think it was February and March, because I had, I had heard, I think that there was kind of a, I wouldn't say it was volatile, but there was a, there was a vibrant meeting in January, because I think that there was a lot of uncertainty and things like, things like that associated with the subject matter. Based on the two meetings that I was at, I, I met some of these landowners, actually, it was after the meetings, and talked to them about their concerns and everything else. I just wanted to say, not, I, by the way, I didn't say a word in any of these meetings, which I think you'd, most of you would find pretty amazing. The, the work that Kent and the Environmental Services team did on this is pretty impressive, because there was a lot of unknown, I think. And, and what we're essentially doing is changing vote, for lack of a better way to describe it, changing zoning regulations to promote more natural and normal growth. As we've all said before, 85% of the growth is happening in 15% of the county, and a lot of these folks living out there moved into those areas so that the long arm of government, if you will, wouldn't continue to tell them what to do, or, or it would, it would go away. We all know that, that type of stuff doesn't go away. I guess I just wanted, it just, it just becomes more complicated. I wanted to let the Commissioners know, and I wanted Kent to know, that the work that they did was, again, pretty impressive. Thank you. Because this was a, this was weird, I mean, and, and it still is probably going to be fraught with some, a little bit of peril, but I think- of peril, but I think the solutions that they came up with are, are realistic, they're also open, and it's not a money grab. I don't think we're out there looking for fee-based income to put these landowners in a strange position. So, Madam Chair, thanks for the time. And Kent, tell your team, thanks for the work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. Just for the public record, so that folks out there can understand what we're doing here. The resolution proposed refers to text amendments that I think you're willing to discuss with us here a little bit today. And I'm just looking through this and some of the minutes from the hearings that you had, it looked like there were four property owners from maybe Western Douglas County, Bennington area who actually testified. Were those people in the landscaping business?
Yes, I, I'm going to say generally they were all landscapers that, that have property, that have some of these landscape uses associated with them.
Effective by this change.
Correct.
And then the resolution references these proposed amendments as what you'd like to see us adopt for our zoning code.
Correct.
And I'm just going through here, they probably are more voluminous than we want to go into today, but just to highlight a couple of things. When physical or cultural features existing on the ground are at variance with those shown in the official zoning map or in other circumstances not covered by subsections A through F above, the Board of Adjustment shall interpret the district boundaries. That's the boundaries that these would apply to?
That is a general kind of policy statement in the zoning regulations that allow for...
That's not a change?
No, no, that's not, that's really just defining the appeal process that anyone would have.
Okay. And the same for later on, required frontage? That's not a change either?
No.
Okay. So what are the principal changes contained in this resolution?
Okay. I can go through those pretty quickly.
Just the key components?
Okay. So article number two, article two deals with definitions, and we are adding a definition of urban agriculture there. That one is, is kind of tangentially related to landscape businesses, but it does have some kind of association. So we wanted to make sure that we had that definition in place because that wasn't there before. In article three, that deals with use types, specifically page four and page eighteen of that, we are simply adding a defined landscape business and garden center definitions there for those use types so that it's clear as to what those mean. Article four, the zone district, page six and eleven are being amended there. So there we're adding landscaping businesses as special use in the rural residential district and as a permitted use in the mixed use district and the industrial district. And then there are references to some supplemental regulations which simply help to further define the, the guidelines there that those particular uses go by.
What will be the practical effect on people engaged in landscaping in this area?
Really, the practical effect is, is one, we are, we are helping to define the, I guess the, the term that the, a couple of the planning commissioners used, the guardrails for, for kind of the use. And so what that identifies is that, okay, your business is allowed to, to continue on this, we, we are going to grant you a special use permit that will identify any additional kind of conditions there that, that need to be in place.
One minute.
And then the, the guidelines that are in place are things like outdoor signage, kind of setbacks from, from other properties, especially where they're budding up to residents and, and a different kind of zone district, those types of things. It's really, we're, we're trying to mitigate potential conflicts between the uses. A landscape use where you're going to have, have things going on with that as opposed to just a residence per se. So that's, that's what most of those are, are aimed at. And then again, we, we did get input from the landscape use property owners and gave us some really good feedback on, on some of those, and then we did adjust some of those recommendations and you'll see, and that's what's represented here today. The other thing, article five are, are the supplemental regulations, and most of those are just to, to define.
Commissioner Friend?
Again, thank you again, Madam Chair. I, I wasn't, I wanted to add, put a little bit of context in this. What essentially happened at the January meeting was probably born from, from notification or, and the consternation, if there was any, was born from notification that ostensibly told or informed quite a few landowners that if I, if I'm not, if I'm speaking out of, of turn, Kent, let me know, quite a few landowners, according to the way we had regulatory constraints in place right now, were out of compliance. So they came in and said, wait a minute, whoa, 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 we're out of compliance. What are you going to do? Well, we're going to help you get into compliance by, by adjusting some of these and, and trying to be as open-minded as possible. So that happened. So part of the problem is the code now currently, before we adopt this, puts some of these folks with the rapid growth that's actually occurring in a really weird spot. So in other words, if I had a neighbor, I'll make this brief, I had a neighbor here and suddenly this guy's got a bunch of gravel and, and all kinds of other stuff that he, he or she didn't have before in that particular area, A, they could have potentially been out of compliance, and B, that neighbor could have said, that's out of compliance, this guy's in trouble. What they're doing now is they're saying, well, you can go out and seek, and, and maybe I'm, you know, kind of not saying it right, but now you can go out and seek a special exemption to do this here, and then you're fine, you're, you're within compliance. This was very, the reason that I praised Kent, and the reason I'm praising this team is it was extremely complicated. There's folks out there doing all kinds of interesting stuff, and they should. It's their job. I mean, they, they have a business out there. So I think what's happening now, I'll, I digress, is we're going, look, don't worry about it. The government's not coming out here and telling you to shut your business down. What we're doing is making you compliant. So I could be way off the beam, but I sat for two meetings and I heard that, and, and the last meeting, everybody's like, yeah, this makes sense. So it's interesting and confusing, but I, I, again, I just appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I know it's been a few months worth of heartache and headache. So thank you, Madam Chair.
No other lights? Is there anyone else wishing to comment during this public hearing for or against this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners. I, I did want to just tie one thing back to your action that you took last week. I had asked you for a, an amendment to change our special use permit process to make it a little more streamlined, to reduce the cost for those folks. We will be reaching out now to those landowners that we've identified as, as being kind of in nonconformance. And so we will invite them to be part of that process, which will be expedited for them. So you'll be seeing some things come through the planning commission and back in front of you to grant those special, special use permits then. Thank you very much.
We'll move to committees, the first being the budget report as presented, human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, and our legislative report, which is in your pocket. But I did want to make a note that on March 28th, the legislature advanced LB 276, which is the adopting of the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Act, so that is good news. A few other bills advanced as well, but the one other one of note is the, in the Health and Human Services Committee, they did advance on an eight to zero vote, LB 570, which is to adopt the Overdose Fatality Review Teams Act. That hasn't officially been reported out, but we expect that, I think it actually did happen yesterday, if I remember right, that they said it. But anyway, it was good news for Douglas County that it was voted out eight to zero as well. With that, we do have need for an executive session for contract negotiation. Is there a motion to adjourn into executive session, recess into executive session? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion passes six to zero. Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. We're adjourned at 10:21 a.m.